Ray, it's not an endorsement of anything. It's just a picture.
So why are you, you missed my place? I didn't address my place. Yeah, yeah. How I kind of, they're like trying to somehow get around it. Like you want to get us in the park.
Great. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Peter O'Taki. I'm very honored to be the mayor of Menlo Park for 2018. And I'd like to welcome all of you to the January 23rd, 2018 Menlo Park City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first of all, I'd like to introduce my colleagues. Councilmember Rich Klein to my right, councilmember Kirsten Keith next to me, and also Vice Mayor Ray Mueller to my left. Councilmember Catherine Carlton is on a work/business trip, so can't, cannot join us tonight, unfortunately. Over on my left, excuse me, I'm a little under the weather here. On my left, at the table over there is City Manager Alex McIntyre. Next to him is our City Attorney Bill McClure. Over on this side is our Deputy City Clerk Jalena Harada. And if any of you would like to speak tonight on an item, please fill out the cards at the back of the table, speaker cards, and kindly give them to Jalena. If I can ask all of you to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a quick announcement. The, wanted to provide an update on the appeal to the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors this morning. Our appeal on the Stanford University Center for Academic Medicine project at 453 Quarry Road. We had the opportunity to present our concerns about the increasing traffic impacts and other impacts, housing impacts, on Menlo Park by the increasing growth by Stanford on the north side of the campus. And while we certainly said we weren't against the project specifically, it was more about the cumulative impact of that growth and how that was impacting our residents. And, and we also, the Planning Department in Stanford had presented that revised numbers that for trip counts that even with the hospital and with the Middle Plaza project still showed less than their 2010 projections after their 2000 GUP. I then did a short rebuttal that, expressing that our residents don't see the 2010 projections. What they do is that they experience the growth that has taken place, actual growth that has taken place on, on Sand Hill Road and El Camino over the last several years from the growth. Having said all that, the, oh, and I will say, several of the supervisors asked follow-up questions about, and certainly echoed some of the concerns, but at the end of the day, as I think we all knew that the, the appeal is based on the procedure itself, and there wasn't a whole lot, and so the appeal was, was denied. But I do believe that we, we had the opportunity to present our concerns and inform the supervisors in Santa Clara County, and I think that will be beneficial to us as we go into the 2018 general use plan update, which I know that they're having a workshop on that tonight, in fact, in Palo Alto, and will be one of the items on our agenda this evening. So with that, we'll, we'll just quickly go through public comment. And during public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. We have two cards so far. I'd like to invite Marcy Abramowitz to come up, followed by Andrew Boone. Marcy, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marcy Abramowitz, and I am here yet again, representing the Felton Gables Homeowners Association and our entire neighborhood of 127 homes. I know that later this evening, there will be a discussion of major projects to be considered for the coming year. I am not addressing that. I am instead here to request that in addition to major undertakings, the city proceed with a concurrent list of small projects, things that can be accomplished with minimal dollars and effort, but that would project big payoffs to the city. One item for the small project list would be quad gates and quiet zone at Encinal, and ideally, other crossings that aren't going to be grade separated. We understand from staff that the cost would be roughly $1 million per crossing, and with hundreds of families living near the Encinal Crossing, it's not just Felton Gables and the Stone Pine neighborhoods. The impact would be substantial in terms of quality of life and increased safety. Additionally, at a $1 million cost, we know money's not free and not growing on trees, there would also just be, it would, the, the investment would be relatively small when compared to the overall benefit. So I do hope that you will consider this, or include this in your consideration set when you meet on the 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Andrew Boone, followed by Pamela Jones. Andrew, good evening.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and I am here to urge you again to please reconsider the project that was studied very carefully to install bike lanes on El Camino Real. I commend you and your city for the process that has been undertaken so far. It's been more in-depth than any other city considering this type of redesign for El Camino Real. Redwood City just finished a similar type of study, but there wasn't as much public outreach, and I think the report that W-Trans came up for the city of Menlo Park was more detailed, and it said clearly, this change, you know, removing parallel parking and replacing it with some type of bicycle lane, will not only improve safety clearly for people riding bikes and for people walking, but it would cut car traffic. So that's something we've been saying for many years, that, you know, people take one mode of transportation or the other at a given time, and people choose every day what to do. And when the street is like it is, El Camino Real, it's, there's no consideration for people bicycling at all. Of course, the choice is going to be, you know, people dissuaded from choosing that. And redesigning the street is something that, you know, this city should look at as a major opportunity at really a low cost. You know, you're talking about paint, if you're only standard bike lanes, or some type of cheap barrier that can be installed there. I bicycled in the city of Beijing, China, and they have these low-wire, almost, you know, really small barriers that work fine to keep car traffic separated from bicycle traffic. This is something that's been built in hundreds of cities all over the world, and it really works to improve safety and make the street better. And it's something that a lot of people are not going to like the change and are going to complain about, but that's what leadership is about. You know, that's something, if we're going to reduce greenhouse gases by 80% in just the next 30 years, this is exactly the kind of thing we need to be doing. If we're going to make it safe and convenient for anybody that lives in Menlo Park or works in Menlo Park to choose to bike or choose to walk when they want to, this is something you have to do. We can't have a car-centric street running right through the middle of downtown, separating the city into two pieces, and expect that a lot of people are going to decide not to take the car for a lot of trips. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Pamela Jones.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members and staff. I'd like to say that there's something wonderful happening on Willow Road and Hamilton Avenue. There are flag people helping the pedestrians cross the street. There's been paint put down, and the, the green stuff that they stick in the ground, and it looks like the people there are a lot safer, and, and traffic is being very mindful when they're in that intersection. So I just want to commend our staff, because I assume that it was our, our traffic department and along with, with Facebook, that worked out something that is really improving safety there. I'd also like to note that our police officers are very busy giving tickets on Willow Road for those people that block the intersections during red lights. One afternoon, they had, there was two cars that they had pulled over that they were at least chatting with. I didn't stay long enough to see if they were giving tickets. So our police department is doing what the residents in the Willows has asked them to do. So I just wanted to let you know that. So thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Jalena, are there any more cards? All right. Thank you. So our next item is a presentation by Get Us Moving San Mateo County, and I just wanted to say, we have a very esteemed panel with us this evening. Supervisors Warren Slocum and Don Horsley, as well as Palo Alto Councilmember Corey Wolbach. But I know, Corey, you're here in a different capacity in your, your day job, so welcome to all three of you. I don't know, I welcome any of you to begin the presentation, but certainly, it's a pleasure to have you join us this evening. Oh, and I do want to mention, just on the Center of Academic Medicine, the Stanford Project this morning, I did mention not only the impacts on Sand Hill Road, but on Alpine Road and Alameda de las Pogas, since we share that jurisdiction, so.
Well, good evening, Mayor O'Taki, and council members as well, city staff, and thanks for hosting us this evening. And traffic, obviously, is a major issue.
Can you, supervisor, can you just move it a little bit closer? Thank you.
Oh, there it goes. Okay, I won't start over, but in any case, the traffic is obviously a major issue, and you have three members of your city talk about traffic. How we really started this project of getting us moving again, Supervisor Slocum and I are working, we're working on housing for our county. We sort of recognized that there's something in the neighborhood, about 72,000 jobs have been created the last few years, and only about 2,500 housing units. And as we were working on this project, we started recognizing that major issue for us really is traffic. And every time we talked to residents, the first thing that came up was traffic. In all of our jurisdictions, city, the unincorporated area, we're stuck with traffic, not only on freeways and highways, but also cut-through traffic. So we then did some polling to find out some attitudes about, you know, what people would find supportive, and we started that, that process and connected with the Transit Authority, and they are interested as well. Obviously, that's their priority. And so tonight's presentation really is about that project, about getting us moving. We don't really have an expenditure plan as of yet, but that's what the process is about, is developing an expenditure plan about projects that could help us alleviate some of this congestion that we're all suffering from. I know my constituency, I hear about it every single day, and I'm sure you do as well. And with that, I would invite my colleague Supervisor Slocum to have a few words.
Thank you. It's, it's always difficult to be the second supervisor to speak, especially when you follow my longtime dear friend, Mr. Horsley. But let me just say that we're both thrilled to be working with SAM Trans very closely and very productively, I believe, in this effort. The thought being that we may jointly put a ballot measure on the November 18 San Mateo County ballot. We'll see what transpires between now and the deadline to get something on the ballot. But realize that there's been a lot of work on this issue. There's been multiple polls done, there has been website developed, TV commercials developed, et cetera, et cetera. And I think one of the things, one of the challenges that Corey faces is that there's actually a questionnaire, which all of you have in front of you, and hopefully, we can do a picture afterwards, but this is a fill-it-out-and-mail-it-in kind of survey. Already, Corey has 10,000 of these returned that he has to, I think, manually tabulate.
No.
No, not alone, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of surveys to come back in a very short period of time. I don't know if any of you saw the commercials on CNN and other networks, but they have, they were running. And I just want you to realize that there's a group, a small group, and a medium group, and a large group, that are working very hard and very diligently on this issue. And hopefully, after the presentation tonight, Corey will answer the question that you're all asking, well, how does this affect me, and what can the city do to help this effort along? So with that, appreciate the opportunity to be here, to see all my old dear friends, and I'll turn the mic over to Corey.
Thanks for that introduction. Very nice to be here tonight as the consultant for SAM Trans, as the outreach manager for the Get Us Moving effort. Tonight, you know, after that kickoff, I can probably breeze through the first couple of slides, but really, just going to try and cover the challenges we're facing, some of the solutions we're looking at, and how you can help. I do want to emphasize that Get Us Moving is really a partnership between San Mateo County Transit District, AKA SAM Trans, and the Board of Supervisors, and a number of partner agencies and organizations, including every city in the county, including Menlo Park, as members of our technical advisory group. We know that we have to invest a lot more in transportation. We're starting to put together a lot of ideas about how best to do that, and we know that we're going to need some more money, and that's kind of what this is about, and saying, if more money is available, where should it be spent? We really want to make sure that everybody in San Mateo County, in every organization, every city in San Mateo County, has an opportunity to have their voice heard in this consideration that will culminate over the course of the next few months in a potential draft expenditure plan that then could move forward. Quick background, just a refresher, I'm sure you're all very familiar with some of the transit agencies that collaborate in the county. San Mateo County Transit District, again, colloquially known as SAM Trans, that operates our paratransit, our buses, manages Caltrain, manages the whole Caltrain line, and administers local transportation funding programs, CCG, and also commute.org. Everybody working together in this county to, to keep people on the move. A bit of the context, we already heard about the, you know, the relationship between housing and transportation. We know that the population of the county between 2010 and 2040 is expected to grow to almost a million people, so that's a growth of just over a quarter. The population over age 65 in particular, growing by over 137%. We know that because of newer understandings of best practices in urban studies and planning, and with a big push and obligations even from the state with new legislation, new housing will be focused primarily in transit areas, corridors, and transit nodes. And then also want to point out that paratransit ridership, you know, these are folks who, we have an obligation to help get around the county. We don't get a lot of fare box recovery from paratransit, but we're looking at a growth from 2010 to 2040 in paratransit rides per year, of just over 300,000 per year to over a million per year. What this means is we're really facing a number of challenges. We're facing aging infrastructure, difficulty just keeping up with state-of-good repair, potholes, bicyclists and pedestrians who don't feel that they have safe and direct routes, and we could go on. But you're familiar with the challenges you face right here. The good news is that there are a lot of things that are under consideration, whether it's the 101-92 interchange, discussions about the Dunbarton Corridor, which I know is of great interest to Menlo Park, changing buses in the SAM Trans fleet to electric over time, and better, you know, mobility options for youth and for seniors, and the list goes on. There are a lot of things that are under consideration. Some of these are further along than others, but the point is that there are some options. The bad news is, none of them are cheap. You know, Caltrain, as I was saying before, Caltrain and SAM Trans both are going to need additional funding just to maintain state-of-good repair, let alone to be able to manage the growth in senior population, total population, and paratransit population. Dunbarton Corridor is not cheap. Caltrain Modernization 2.0, the next step in improving Caltrain, is going to be quite costly, even just the San Mateo County share of maintaining and improving Caltrain. And of course, large projects like changes along 101 are hugely expensive. Of course, it would be great to have all this funded by state and federal grants. We all know that that's not going to happen, and we know that those grants are not guaranteed, they're highly competitive, and without some local funding, it's hard to appeal to them, and without some local self-help, we're not going to be able to close the gaps. So the good news when it comes to funding is that legislators representing San Mateo County have gotten legislation passed and signed by the governor, which opens an opportunity for a half-cent sales tax measure that could go on the November 2018 ballot. Before going to the ballot, it would have to be approved by the SAM Trans board, would also have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, and then it would need two-thirds approval from the public. So there are several steps along the way, for anyone worried that this is moving too fast, there are several steps along the way before anything would be in place, and we want to use that opportunity to have a conversation across the county. The result, if this moves forward, we could see a potential 80 million, that's eight-zero million, per year for transportation improvements right here in San Mateo County. Separately from the other discussions about RM3 or a Caltrain-specific measure, this would be just for San Mateo County, like Santa Clara County did just over a year ago. And I do want to emphasize that polling done by the Board of Supervisors shows that the two-thirds threshold is achievable. So our primary goal is to hear from everybody in the county. Our primary tool is the survey. I've left by both the entrances, some in English as well as in Spanish. We also have them available if you know places we should take them, in Tagalog, Filipino, and also in Chinese. I have thousands of unfilled-out surveys in my office. They're not doing any good there, so if you have ideas about where we could deliver them or groups that could help us distribute them, please let me know. And I'm really serious about that. But we have had over 11,000 surveys filled out so far, between online and in paper. It's an easy survey, basically a couple of questions. How do you get around now, and what are your priorities? We list 12, and then we leave, we have a fill-in-the-blank area as well. We've been reaching out by mailing these around the county, distributing them to public places like this, the TV spots, Facebook, you know, rolling out notices on Nextdoor. And the point is to get that public input. Along with the public input, we also have two expert groups that we've convened and have been meeting regularly. One of them is our technical advisory group, and your city, along with every other city in the county, has a member on the technical advisory group, a member of staff. Whether it's a public works director or city manager, varies from city to city, along with partner agencies like BART. We also have a stakeholder advisory group, which includes people who are experts and advocates for the business community, for the environment, for seniors, for people with disabilities, for bicycling improvements, et cetera. The idea here is that by having these multiple sources of input, these multiple data points, the public input through the survey, the technical advisory group with the experts representing especially cities, and the stakeholder advisory group representing different interest groups, we can really get a broad sense of what the priorities are, and start to put together a draft expenditure plan. And what that looks like is really kind of the next question. What does the expenditure plan look like? TBD. We don't have one yet. A little preview of what it might look like, you could look at Santa Clara County, where it was decided to have a series of categories, and rather than stipulating at the front end how every dollar should be spent for the entire life cycle of the measure, establish categories, and maybe call out a few specific projects of greatest need that are apparent now, but have those categories and say, here's how much money should be dedicated to each category, so that over the life cycle of the measure, which, by the way, has not been determined yet, it could be, you know, 10 years, 30 years, or perpetual. But over the life cycle of the measure, new projects, new programs, new needs that are identified could be raised and could be applied and, or could be submitted and could apply for funds from the relevant categories. So how you can really help? Help us get these surveys out, whether it's digitally or in paper. Help us get these in the hands of people and tell them to send them back. We need to hear from people around this county. And also, keep working with your staff, your representative, on our technical advisory group, and feel free to reach out individually. Leverage your network. You all know your community better than SAM Trans does. Let us know where we should go. Let us know where we should be in person, where we should deliver flyers, and who wants to partner with us. And feel free to email blast anyone and everyone you know. you know. Also want to point out, we've left flyers by the entrance for our town hall series that's coming up. I think you should each have one as well. We have town halls happening in San Mateo on the 25th, in, actually, two days, in Pacifica on the 1st, right here in Menlo Park on February 15th, and in South San Francisco on February 22nd. They're all in the evening, all on Thursdays. Those are just good opportunities for people to come, learn more about this, talk to their neighbors and other folks, and really dig into these questions about where their priorities should be, and where our priorities should be as a county. Here's some of our digital, www.getusmovingsmc.com on Facebook. Just look for Get Us Moving SMC, and you can email us at info@getusmovingsmc.com. That's it. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll bring it back up here, see if there are any, oh, and also, do we have a couple of, okay, great. Okay, so why don't we go ahead? Andrew Boone. Andrew, welcome. And...
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and I'm glad to see a proposal for another transportation tax measure come forward. I think we all recognize, and I agree, that we are underinvesting in our transportation system overall. You know, we have a lot of grade separations to go on the Caltrain system. Right now, we have a bus system that, in my opinion, is, I call it a bare-bones system. It's barely enough to provide a form of transportation for really a small, really a very small sector of the population in the county. The bus system and the bicycling network, those should be mainstream modes of transportation. Those shouldn't be on the fringe. Those shouldn't be the last choice that people make, that people want to make for how they travel in San Mateo County. The bus network needs to be the first priority of this tax measure. This needs to be a major expansion, not just to keep SAMTrans service where it is, but expand it. If we're not expanding the bus system, we're not making progress in the county. And what this money should really not be spent on, and what I'm afraid is going to be spent on, is widening Highway 101 to 10 lanes, and expanding one of the interchanges. It's listed on the presentation, the 10192 interchange with new flyover ramps or other types of expansions. Part of the Dunbarton Corridor plan, a billion dollars of it, half of it, is for highway expansions, too. To put flyover ramps on Bayfront Expressway at all three of the major intersections is increasing the capacity of that highway. To widen Highway 101 from eight to 10 lanes is increasing the maximum capacity of the highway, and these projects directly increase greenhouse gas emissions. This is exactly the opposite of what state policy is directing us to do. State policy, green, climate change policy is directing all of the counties in the state to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by a huge amount, not a minor reduction, an 80 percent reduction compared to 1990 levels. We're not moving in that direction by widening highways. And the Sierra Club opposes this sales tax so far, because from what we've heard is that money will go into widening highways, money will go into, directly into damaging the environment when it doesn't need to be that way. We can invest in alternatives to driving, we can invest in a world-class transit system here in San Mateo County instead of a last-century automobile-centric highway system. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Jen Woolison, followed by Pamela Jones. Hi, Jen. Good evening.
Good evening. This is the first you'll hear from me tonight. First, I want to thank Supervisor Horstley and others from San Mateo County for coming to Menlo Park to address this transportation tax that may or may not happen. Parents for Safe Routes has joined the Transportation Equity Allied Movement Coalition, Team C, more easily known as the Transit Justice Coalition. Menlo Spark, Friends of Caltrain, and a bunch of other groups that you are familiar with are also part of this coalition. And some of the principles of this coalition are to increase use and access of affordable, safe, and healthy transportation choices, and prioritize transportation funding and other investments for populations in greatest need. I bring these issues up because I recently had a meeting at Menlo Atherton High School with Brenda Bachechi, the vice principal, Cecilia Taylor and Julie were there from Bell Haven Action, Emma Schalls was there from Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, and Bradley Cleveland from this coalition was there, and Teresa Valles Kelly from Safe Routes to School was there. And we convened specifically to talk about this potential transportation tax, and the children, teenagers in MA that attend MA who are trying to get to MA, particularly from East Palo Alto and Bell Haven. And this is a fantastic opportunity, this transit tax, if it happens, to help fund better SAMTrans busing for those kids in particular. Right now, the school, the high school subsidizes their bus passes, and also the routes are totally underserved. They, there's a demand, but there's not enough buses. And so, anything that can go towards helping these kids get to MA better, safer, quicker, some of them spend hours trying to get to school, they just want to get to school. Also, of course, we'd love investments in more safer walking and biking for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Pamela, welcome.
Thank, again, thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Pamela Jones, I've been a resident in the Bell Haven community since 1973, and I grew up in East Palo Alto, so I'm very familiar with the traffic dynamics in this area. I look forward to an intelligent and creative solution to our traffic nightmare, but I'm very concerned that we're not working with Santa Clara County, specifically Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Stanford, because that's where the traffic that affects us most comes from. And without them a part of the discussion, everything that we're doing is really mute. I'm also very concerned about the Dunbarton Corridor, even considering flyovers that would deeply affect the Bell Haven community as well as East Palo Alto. We've already shoved the traffic down this community's area when we did the Dunbarton access routes. So I, one, would support a 1 percent tax, a cent tax, if it was going to really intelligently solve the problem. Otherwise, I would be against it, because it doesn't look like it's going to serve the best interest of all of the residents. So I would like for you to take that into consideration, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Are there any other cards? Okay, got it. So I certainly had a follow-up question. Corey, you had mentioned about categories, and I was wondering whether, you know, I'm looking at the brochure, the list of priorities, is that sort of what you have in mind, or what, in terms of the categories, sort of like east-west mobility, or greater bicycle pedestrian access? How, what are the different categories that you'll be looking at as the approach to help us understand where the funds would be spent?
Well, I think that the proposals listed in the survey are really just to get people's creative juices flowing. It's to help start the conversation, and that's why we also have the fill-in-the-blank area. Those suggestions that are listed in the survey don't necessarily reflect categories that would be in a draft expenditure plan that would move forward to the SAMTrans and supervisors' boards. It's possible that some of those will make it, it's possible that some of those will be combined, it's possible that others that are highlighted through this Get Us Moving process will take precedence instead. The point is, we want to hear from you and from the rest of the community throughout the county about what those priorities should be, what the categories should be, and how much should be dedicated to each. So I do think it's premature for us to assume what this is going to look like. And if I could just respond very briefly to, I thought that the comments from the public were important, but I just want to make really, really clear that there is no sales tax yet, there is no expenditure plan yet, and hearing those kinds of comments is really useful and really important right now. So I really appreciate those that came to speak tonight, and I hope that they'll encourage their friends and their colleagues and their neighbors to participate in this process as well, so that their voices aren't left out.
If I might make another comment myself about, not so much about highways, but bus service. And we have a system of transportation that's relatively robust north and south, and it's Caltrain. And eventually, when it becomes electrified, and if there is grade separations, it will be pretty successful, could really significantly probably double its capacity. But we don't have a very good system east-west. And the other problem with bus service is that traditional bus service stops every couple of blocks, and it takes an hour to get anywhere. That discourages people, because you can get there faster in your car. And so, one of the things that we think that, or at least from, on a personal basis, that, that the bus service probably has to start thinking really outside the box. Some things they have to do, like they have to have, they should have Wi-Fi, for example. So at least if somebody's stuck in a bus, at least they can do some of their office work. But they also have to do things like more express buses. An express bus means that you have two stops in one location, and two stops in another. Now, I'm not an expert at bus service, but I do know that the way, the way in which we operate has the east-west connection is very poor, and I think it has to be much more robust, and it has to be faster. I don't mean faster in terms of speed, I just mean you can't have all these different stops all over the place. You have to figure out, you know, where people, where are they going to pick them up at, and where they want to go to. Pretty much like, you know, the larger companies have figured out with their white buses, they use our park-and-ride, and, which was meant really for carpooling, and they use that, and they pick people up, and they do a pretty successful job. And so we need to kind of mimic that. The other thing is that our buses, you know, we've talked about electrified buses and things of that sort, but we, they probably also need to be smaller, because if you notice, like, especially in the, in my district, on the, well, of course, I have parts of Menlo Park in it, you know, I do hear about the school traffic, and somehow we have to make sure that our bus service, now, there's some federal regulation that prohibits the SAMTrans from actually being like a, you know, a school bus. But that doesn't mean that they can't have routes and times that coincide with schools, because you can take a lot of traffic off the roads if you provide safe, reliable bus services to schools. So, you know, coast side, again, you know, we, there's no possibility of increasing road sizes. We're not going to increase the lanes. I could tell you that my constituents would be after me with pitchforks and torches if I tried to do that. But bus service, and, you know, express bus service does in fact work, and trails, and connecting multimodal trails that give people the opportunity to connect different villages with town center. So, you know, we, you know, there isn't an expenditure plan now, and we're not necessarily, really necessarily interested in expanding highways. We understand that. You just expand it, you end up maybe with more traffic. But we have to look at all possible options for, for this potential project.
Is there anything more?
No, that's good. Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, so I also wanted to mention, Corey, you know, I think I can say on behalf of our staff, you could send us a batch of the, of these pamphlets, and, you know, we certainly have community meetings, you know, at least once a week on different topics. I think we'd be delighted to include them at the, at those workshops, and to help distribute them. I think we could probably also have some at the library. The follow-up question I had is now the timing. So as I understand it, you're in this input, you know, gathering input from residents stage, and we'll be sure to make sure our, encourage our residents to submit it. But I know we've already, as a city, and as the city council, I know we have submitted our wish list of different items, but some key improvements that we'd like to see. When is the phase, and how will you go through that process of then, either determining categories, determining where these, you know, various great ideas? And I know that you'll have to have the ballot measure ready by probably early August, so it's somewhere in between here, I know. If you can give me a sense of that timeframe, and will there be workshops, or hearings, or something at that time that we can certainly, you know, attend and be a part of?
Thanks. Actually, that's a really important point, and I didn't talk about it much during the presentation, so thanks for the opportunity. So the current survey that we have here is looking, we're looking to close it at the end of February, and start really digesting the feedback from that. We may move forward with a second round of community outreach, potentially another survey and/or additional town halls. So the town halls that are coming up are great, you know, you could call them workshops if you want. Those are a really good opportunity for the public to come and have conversations about this, rather than just, you know, filling it out on their own. As we move into the springtime, you know, we are tentatively, it's a little too early to commit right now, but we're hoping to have some more specifics, and, you know, a more complex opportunity for breaking these options apart. Right now, it's just open-ended. As we move towards the end of the spring and early summer, that's our hope, to bring a draft expenditure plan to the SAMTrans board, and then to the Board of Supervisors. So by the time early summer is wrapping up, we can know if we're going to be moving something to the ballot or holding off.
Great. Thank you. Not sure who was first. Vice Mayor Mueller?
I just wanted to thank you guys for, you know, taking on two of the most popular topics you can take on in a public service, raising taxes and traffic congestion. Sincerely, it's hard work, what you guys are doing right now. It's easy to get eggs thrown at you while you're doing it, and we sincerely appreciate the fact that you guys are taking on a big challenge like this, and the hard work that goes on with that, to try to relieve our neighborhoods and our, and our region from congestion. So I think it goes without saying, I think Peter said it, anything we can do to help you with outreach, or just to gather feedback to best inform the process, we'll be there to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keith?
Thanks. Thank you for your presentation tonight, for coming and visiting with us on this important topic, which we talk about at every council meeting. We definitely need improvements to all sorts of things, but I'm just curious, when you put these priorities here, who came up with these priorities to add here?
I think those came out of the conversations with staff, technical advisory group, stakeholder advisory group, Board of Supervisors, really everybody, you know, was involved in that.
And I'm assuming that they, these are the things that rose to the top, and that's why they're on this list?
Yeah.
Right. So we...
Yep.
It was actually also the polling. We did some polling with the general public to ask them a series of questions, and that's kind of, those were the top items.
Okay. I have a feeling that these items are probably going to remain the top items, based on what you've just said, that all these different groups were utilized. So when the public looks at this, I mean, I think an assumption is that these are probably the top items that you're going to discuss for funding. But just going to that, when you, our mayor mentioned a little bit about the ballot deadline. What is the deadline? When do you have to get the language in?
You know, actually, I don't have the number at my fingertips. I'm sorry I don't, but I'll get back to you with that.
When, when, oh.
As your former registrar of voting.
Yes, former registrar.
I'm going to try to remember the code, but I think it's 88 days before the election.
Okay.
So you can look at November, and it's normally 88 days before that.
Thank you. And what is your, do you have a deadline on when you want to receive this, this information?
We would like to have these surveys and wrap this, this phase of the survey process up by the end of February, so February 28th.
Okay, end of February. And then, one of the questions I believe Mr. Boone was asking about, will this money go to widening highways? What's your response?
That's the question. That's what we want to know. Should we?
Right. That's why you're doing the survey.
Right. When we list them, these options in the survey, and list them in the presentation, that's not because we're necessarily going to send future money to those things. We're saying, these are things people are talking about. Lots of people are in favor of each of these. We want to know which ones should actually be selected as priorities.
Right. So it probably will depend... Right, so it probably will depend a lot on what responses you receive back. And when you, you'll tabulate those responses and let everybody know on a website, I'm sure, what number came in for each category, and it'll be very transparent, everybody will be able to see that. And then, just, there were questions about the bus service, and thank you Supervisor Horstley for talking about the bus service. And, you know, just here in Menlo Park, I was looking back at an email in September of 2017 where there were, there were problems with the kids getting to Menlo Atherton High School from Bellhaven and from East Palo Alto. And I, you know, wrote in to ask for some help with the bus, and this was September of 2017, and was informed that the earliest that any changes could be made was likely August of 2018. And so, that becomes disconcerting, so there's a whole email thread about, you know, these kids are trying to come to school, and they're having a hard time getting here, and they end up, I guess the bus, I want to say 281, is full, and so they end up, the students end up getting on the Dumbarton Express, but then they get dumped at Willow and Coleman, and so they have a much longer walk down a really busy street to get to school, and then they're late. And so, that's a real concern about our students getting to school late, because then it kind of throws off your whole day. You're late, you're, you know, not ready for the first class, and it doesn't, it's not a great way to arrive to school. So that is a concern, and figuring out how we can be a little bit more nimble to get the service that we need to get the students to school. And that's just one example. So I'm really glad you're doing this. One thing, you mentioned perpetuity. You said that word about, and I think oftentimes, doing these things in perpetuity is a really bad idea. And the reason I say that is because I think it is important when you're having a tax, you need to come back to the people that you're taxing and let them know what you're doing with the money, how it's improved their lives. And when you do something in perpetuity, I think that, that becomes a source of irritation for people, and you'll find that people will come out in opposition to anything measured if you do it in perpetuity. The 10, the 20 to 30 years, much better idea. So thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Again, I just wanted to be very transparent, that there is not a sunset stipulated yet, but that's, again, one of the questions that we're figuring out through this process.
I understand, I just wanted to bring that up because that word, I know when our school board tried to do that, the, it failed, and it never fails here in Menlo Park, but it failed, and a lot of it had to do with that word.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right, there are no other questions? I think, Corey, you'd asked us to come down.
Yeah, I, not, remember, there is no ballot measure yet, there is no sales tax yet, but we are asking for your support in encouraging people to take the survey so they can have their voices heard, so if you'll maybe do a quick photo, just to promote the survey itself.
All right. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Don't you want to be in it?
All right, thank you. So next, we have our consent calendar. There are six items on the consent calendar. I wanted to see if the NMI fellow council members would like to either poll or discuss any.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, motion for all items on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Great. And before we vote, I just wanted to make one comment on F2, which is, I was happy to see that the actual cost came in a million below the budget, that's-
Budget for forcing, yeah.
That is nice, much appreciated to see that. Anyway, kudos to staff on that. All right, with that, with that, let's vote.
The motion passes for a zero. Councilmember Colton is absent.
All right, thank you. Moving to regular business, we have item G1, which is to adopt a resolution to amend all city salary schedules, adopted on or after November 10, 2015. We have Human Resources Manager Lenka Diaz will introduce the item. Lenka, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. What we have before you tonight is a similar item we brought to you last month, which is amending our salary schedule so that it includes the current patrol schedule of 2,184 hours per year. Currently, most of our positions work 2,080 hours per year, and therefore have a maximum salary reflecting that number of hours. So because our patrol schedule a couple of years ago changed to 2,184 hours per year, Calpers told us that we must amend our salary schedule to include the maximum salary under that schedule. So, and when we came to you in December, we only requested revision of the current salary schedule that went into effect in December. This resolution is to go back and amend prior schedules, going back to the date that we enacted that 2,184-hour schedule. I do have a correction to the resolution we're asking you to approve tonight. The resolution states that we'd like to amend the salary schedules approved on or after November 10 of 2015. We need to add to that and prior to December 10, 2017, because we've already made that revision to the December 10 schedule. We are only amending the ones prior to that. So the resolution would read, what we're asking you to approve is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Menlo Park, amending salary schedules approved on or after November 10, 2015, and prior to December 10, 2017. And then at the bottom of the resolution, it lists all nine of the resolutions that were passed during that timeframe. We ask that you remove the section that says "and subsequent amendments" as we, again, we have already taken the action to revise the December schedule. Any questions?
Are there any public comments on this? Okay, I'm going to, with the indulgence of my fellow council members, I'm going to ask a couple clarifying questions that I think might, might make this pretty quick. First of all, in this motion, we are not increasing headcount, correct?
Correct.
There are no salary raises in this motion or proposal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It's only the three police positions that I saw that were highlighted in red, I think it's the corporal, sergeant, and-
Officer.
Thank you, that are, that are changed in this. And we are not authorizing any overtime or any issue by this. It is really just simply a restating of the salary schedules.
Correct.
Previously approved, and in the case of the police, going back to November 10, 2015.
Correct.
Great. Councilmember Keith?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the resolution to amend all city salary schedules previously adopted on or after November 10, 2015, and prior to 12/10/2017, and that we would make the change on the resolution to number one with those dates, and remove the last part "and subsequent amendments."
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, let's vote.
The motion passes for a zero. Councilmember Colton is absent.
Thank you again, Lenka. All right, next, next item tonight, G2, approve a revised comment letter on the draft environmental impact report for the Stanford University 2018 general use permit project. Assistant Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya will be introducing the item, and while you're getting set up, Nikki, I wanted to thank you personally for your work on the CAM project and evaluating that, and your presentation this morning that, in the slides, definitely appreciate your hard work on this, and, and I think we, as I mentioned earlier, I think we were able to get our point across to the supervisors quite effectively, and appreciate your help on that.
Absolutely, happy to be there and happy that you kicked us off and concluded as well, so it made it a little bit easier for me to get up in the middle. So just before we jump into the Stanford item, because you had an item on your consent calendar for the shuttle program, I also wanted to just mention, because there was a question that came up about school service from the Bellhaven neighborhood, so our shuttle does also provide a connection to MA. So we made that change last spring in order to provide another option for students. So if anyone here is looking for another option, we sent some mailers out to the Bellhaven neighborhood last year, but this is a reminder that that's available as well.
Oh, good, thank you.
Sure. So then, the Stanford general use permit comment letter that's before you this evening, so this is an update as the county extended the comment period to February 2. You had approved a draft letter at the end of November, and since we had a little bit more time to review the environmental impact report, brought back a revised comment letter. And then, just before the meeting this evening, we passed out a redline version with some additional changes that had come in in the last 24 hours, and there are hard copies in the back of the room if anybody wants to see those additional markups. But with that, we're happy to take any questions or answer anything else that we can to continue the discussion on the comment letter.
Councilmember Klein?
Thank you for, obviously, a significant amount of work in a short amount of time to pull these things together. I have just a couple of questions I wanted to ask, and one of them is, how particular do we want to get about recommendations for traffic mitigation? Like even putting ideas on this that we want them to consider?
Yes, I think the more specific we are in general, in general, the more specific we are, the easier it is for the response to be drafted. We did put forward a few suggestions, and I can find the specific reference in the letter, but for the middle pedestrian bicycle crossing and the Dumbarton corridor improvements were two things that we heard from the council when you had the presentations from the county.
Okay. The reason I say that is because I, I'm wondering if there's additions or supplemental ideas about how to solve some of the Sandhill Road problems, and, and having them perhaps take a wider view on intersections, and, and saying, maybe these poor-performing intersections need to be changed and altered from being lighted intersections into roundabouts, or something different that allows flow at a low speed but doesn't stop traffic every quarter mile, eighth of a mile. I haven't actually seen signalized intersections work in conjunction with each other the way we always have been promised from Caltrain and Caltrans and anybody else, so I'm skeptical that's ever going to happen on Sandhill. So I'd like to see them consider some other alternatives that perhaps come over from great European cities to have done it, and done it effectively, so if that could be looked at. In addition to the idea of transit on their own campus, and maybe a more firm position on the amount of cars on their campus, and saying maybe they need to, to fund golf carts or some kind of inner-system transit on the campus that allows people to not have to own a car at all, or, you know, if you get staff housing, you know, you don't need a car, right? Because you can go right across the campus and they'll provide some kind of vehicles. I just feel like that's where they need to go if they're going to continue to look at housing on campus and tell us nobody's going to use cars. We need to give them a reason not to use cars, and, and then have them put a policy in place where they enforce not owning cars as they live on campus. Those are two of my biggest ones. I like the changes on here, but those are two I just wanted to put in there for consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Mueller?
I want to thank, so, first of all, thanks staff for all the hard work. You guys have been great working with us to get this done. I want to also give thanks to former Palo Alto Mayor Pat Burt, who's been diving into the GUP as well with a bunch of Palo Alto residents. This afternoon, he called me, and he raised a new issue. They found a new one. And that's that, the way that the trip cap is calculated on, is that it looks at the gates of Stanford campus. And what they've discovered is that by looking at some internal documents at Stanford, that they're using external campuses, so I guess there's a new, a new science park in other places, where people are driving into Palo Alto and potentially could drive into Menlo Park, and park, and then take the shuttle to campus. The concern is that that actually mitigates what the impact looks like to the local jurisdictions nearby, because they're still driving our roadways to get to the satellite campus, they're just not actually crossing the threshold of the internal campus. And so, what we need to do in order to make sure we get proper mitigation for impact to our roadways, and, is to create actually an exterior perimeter that we're asking them to look at. Because the way it's structured right now, what they're proposing is that not only will we not get mitigation for the cars coming out, out of the region into that external envelope, but they're also going to get, on the flip side, a benefit, in that they'll get a, in that they're going to get the fact that all those people are on shuttles as a deduction. So we really, it's going to, it gets somewhat complex in terms of doing that, but it's important for us to be looking. And I know this issue's been raised to Supervisor Semidion and his staff as well, but it's something that we really need to, I think, think about as we're putting together our comment letter. Because if folks are driving, for instance, to our, to Middle Plaza and parking there and then taking a shuttle, well, they still came up Willow Road and onto El Camino, and will still have to make transportation improvements. They certainly, we certainly should have mitigations that account for that. And then, and then, and then, how much of a benefit should they really get that they took a bus, you know, a mile and a half? So, thank you.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Nikki, thanks so much for this letter, and I know you and I spoke a little bit earlier today before the council meeting, and I spoke with Alex earlier this morning and had some changes to the letter that I was asking to make it a little bit more strongly worded, which is reflected in some of the redlining, and I thank Nicole Casados for actually getting this for us with all the other things she had to do today. In looking at this, one of the things that I was wanting to add and thinking about on, number one, is that when they're talking about transferring development requests on the campus, they were going to be able to do it with a four-fifths vote. And what I think really should be added is that if it's a four-fifths vote, that one-fifth, meaning the supervisor who represents the district, including Palo Alto, should be part of that four-fifths vote. Because in talking to other supervisors in Santa Clara County, it's very easy to get a four-fifths vote. So with that in mind, you could easily get a four-fifths vote to transfer development rights within the campus, but at least if one of the four-fifths has to be the supervisor from Palo Alto, then there's more accountability for it.
I just want to correct you, so the four-fifths vote actually presently is of the Planning Commission for Santa Clara County. I did speak with, with, so the supervisors are aware of this issue and are trying to address it and how they're going to address the GUP, but currently, it really is a, the supervisors may not even see it unless-
is the transferability, because then you're transferring the traffic impacts, which we just had our mayor and you go down to Santa Clara to discuss. So somehow making that stronger and then maybe requesting that, actually putting in the letter that if it is, if there is a transfer of development rights, that it must go to the Board of Supervisors and have that vote at the Board of Supervisor level and not at the Planning Commission level.
Yeah, and I think also, as evidenced by the CAM project earlier today, I think it would be prudent to do a review of the, the county has a flow chart essentially that outlines what that process looks like. I think there are also instances where the Planning Commission wouldn't even see the transfer of development across the campus, depending on the level of intensity and the specific parameters that are met. And so it would be, I think, in our interest to do a review of that in light of the hearing results today. So that could be something where we have flagged in the letter, strengthening some of that language and perhaps working through the subcommittee to finalize it before the February 2nd deadline on the letter.
Okay, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I mean, I guess I would like it, our request at least, I understand that they have a flow chart, but put a request in this letter that any transfer of development rights would be heard by the Planning Commission, not, I'm sorry, by the Board of Supervisors, not the Planning Commission. And like I said, having one of those four-fifths vote be the supervisor from the district for Palo Alto. I just think it provides a lot more clarity on that issue and that somebody who's really invested in it would have to vote for it, to transfer the rights. The other issue on number two, about the academic growth boundary, so my understanding now is that they're not, they're not asking or being required to extend it. And I think there's concern, and in my conversations with other members of the Palo Alto City Council talking about this, there's concern about preserving the area that a lot of us know as the dish and where people go and walk. And I think, I would like to see in this letter that it should clearly state that this be preserved for the next 50 years and just put it in there. And I think last night at the Palo Alto City Council meeting, they also were, that was something that Mayor Liz Ness brought up as well. Then going through here, I see some other changes that you made, thank you for those other changes. And then just looking on page 75, as we've just discussed previously through the mayor and your going down to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors today, if you look at number C, where it's 5C, and it talks about adding locations for traffic monitoring at gateways to Stanford land beyond the Corden locations that are specified in Santa Clara County, that's great for Santa Clara County, but it needs to include San Mateo County as well, because we all know that there's the spill-off into San Mateo County that we've been talking about tonight as well. And, what was it?
Closer.
Yeah, yeah, we're closer to a lot of the direct impacts off Alpine and Sand Hill, unincorporated and incorporated Menlo Park. And so I think, you know, unfortunately, we don't get all the benefits of having, the tax benefits of having the shopping mall, et cetera, we get all the impacts but not all the benefits. And so I think it's really important that we make this a little bit stronger about the importance to the impacts to San Mateo County and to Menlo Park. I do like how you've listed under 6A, the specific items. And I'm going to go on, you tightened up the language on page 76. One of the things that Vice Mayor Mueller was just talking about, it was also discussed last night at the Palo Alto City Council meeting, and it's this, it's this ability for Stanford to sort of hide the trip numbers. And I say that in that they have a parking lot, it's the Hoover Parking Lot, and so the Hoover Pavilion Garage, which opened September 2nd, I think, 2013, on Quarry Road, and so that's outside the Corden area. So they have hundreds of spots to park cars there, and then they have the Marguerite Shuttle pick people up and take them onto the campus. But we still know the cars are coming and they're parking at the Hoover Pavilion Garage. And then there are all sorts of other examples that were brought up about where this is going on and all the different development that's going on off-campus. So I think that is a bit of a problem. The Soma Technology and Innovation Park, seven buildings on Porter Drive, it goes on and on, the Stanford University Administration Group, there's just so many different projects off the campus, and I think we really need to understand the full impacts of all of these things together. So, yes, yeah, that's fine.
The preserved area, 50-year-preserved area at the dish that Councilmember Keith was mentioning, how does that work with the request for an access route to 280 between the two? It feels like it inevitably conflicts unless we have another idea in mind or there was a more specific route that we were bringing up. I just wanted to ask clarification on that.
Yeah, I think they could be in conflict with each other, so that's definitely a good point. The alternative that we put forward, because the alternative access route was brought up during the 2000 GUP and found to be infeasible, so in anticipation that the report would be found that it's still infeasible to do so, we had recommended routing traffic to Page Mill Road as opposed to Alpine, as Page Mill doesn't have the residential frontage that Alpine does. But I think that's a valid point. We'd have to do a little bit more research on the academic growth boundary restrictions and what that means, but anticipate it could be a conflict.
So, sure, yeah, absolutely. So I think part of what we also need to make sure that we ask for is, and my understanding is Stanford has refused to give this detailed Marguerite data that would show where the offsite is occurring, because they have this plan to drive, they have people drive to Palo Alto and Menlo Park and surrounding areas and have the employees take the Marguerite to campus, but as we were discussing, that avoids the Corden counts. And so we really need to understand what those, the detailed Marguerite data. And perhaps, there was some discussion that they're stating that they don't have a way to count exactly, but people don't really believe that. They have a way of counting who gets on and off of the Marguerite shuttles, and that should be part of this so that we understand where people are being picked up and driven back onto the campus. I just think the level of transparency needs to be upped by Stanford, because the impacts, we all feel it and we all know it, and so they need to, they need to be much more transparent. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. And I would like to see somewhere in this letter where it would state, let me just get to the, something about Stanford should be required to coordinate and cooperate, including funding, with the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority to provide meaningful, large-scale, upstream detention facilities and manage the flows in the San Francisco Creek. Perhaps that could be highlighted under the Hydrology and Water Quality Section as number 15 and then lower number 15 and number 16, create a number 17. But to get that highlighted and specified in there. And I, maybe you can direct me where it says this in our letter, but do we have somewhere where it says that perhaps we should require more units per new academic space, given the region's housing crisis, and that the housing should be provided in advance of the non-residential development?
So right now, the housing comments are numbers seven through 10.
Eight, nine, 10, yes.
We don't specifically call out a reference to phasing requirements, timing them, timing new units coming online with any academic space growth, so that's something that we could, we could look at adding.
Yes, if my colleagues would agree with these, you know, ideas, that would be terrific to add as well, I think.
It's fine with me, it's a requirement, we have typically in our own city not been, oh, this council's not typically supported phasing, so I think we may be setting ourselves up by doing, by trying to require that of another jurisdiction, but if you guys, I'd be supportive of it if you guys want to go that direction.
Okay, yeah, and it is a similar direction that our surrounding city also took. I think that would be helpful. So those are my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Oh, actually, before I get to my comments, I just noticed that we do have a speaker, a public speaker, Jen Willison. Thank you.
I warned you that I would be back. I had an opportunity to read the letter that the city of Menlo Park put together, and I agree that it's a really strong letter, and thank you to the staff. I did also read or look over the letter that the city of Palo Alto put together, and in particular, the section having to do with safe routes to school. And one of the requests that they put in their letter, and I'll read it, "In addition, Stanford should assist the city with the cost of school crossing guards required at major intersections that benefit both children, both city residents and Stanford affiliates." And I think that whatever provisions Stanford is willing to provide for Palo Alto children, they should also be providing for Menlo Park children. So that's a consideration to add in the letter. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that suggestion, Jen. Appreciate it. All right, so, and I would certainly support the inclusion of that. I know we're going to get a lot of, you know, pushback, but if you don't ask, you know, it ain't going to happen. So, you know, one of the big issues I have had in this and studying this is this no-net-new-trips calculation and how they do it, and particularly that it's being done on a, currently being done on a campus-wide basis. And so it's easy to add, well, it's also easy to add, for them to add a couple more Marguerite shuttles downtown Palo Alto to the campus, to which then in turn allows them to put more cars on Sand Hill Road, because it's hard to necessarily, you know, mitigate or offset that. I may be a bit skeptical about how I phrase that, but that's what worries me about how the new trips calculation is currently calculated on a zone, on a campus-wide basis. So Nikki, I wanted to ask you about, you know, we talked about the zone basis. I just wanted to make sure, I saw on page five, a little I4, basically, point four, where it talks about Corden credits. Was that part of where we're talking about the zone basis, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So that comment references kind of two things. One is the Corden credits, so that's the idea that they could add a shuttle in one area where it doesn't necessarily have a direct impact on Sand Hill Road or El Camino within our jurisdiction. And it also references the sub-area request, so looking at the Corden counts really by sub-area to make sure that one particular corridor, corridor isn't impacted at the expense of the others. But I think based on the hearing this morning and our subsequent conversations, that paragraph could be strengthened, but we just need a little more time to be able to refine that specific language over the coming days.
Great, and I encourage you to do so and welcome that. And I know in our subsequent conversation after this morning's hearing, I talked a little bit about a, about the need for a size trigger, basically similar to what we have in the general plan for the M2. When a project is over a certain size, it needs to have a, you know, traffic study done that's current, that takes into account all of the anticipated projects that are taking place and has as current numbers. And I just wanted to make sure that that's what you contemplate for, I think, '17 or '18, is that, trying to read it, given the light color, but I think that's where you were going with that, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So one, one item I think is making sure that we're clear on the request for the procedure of evaluating impacts. If there is a request to transfer development rights from one district to another, and then the second piece of that would be a potential size trigger for large projects that might come forward, especially later in the, if the GUP were to be approved, 10 or so years down the road, you might have substantially different conditions.
Okay, great. And then just to follow, just a few additional things under, on page five, or page six, item D, "All relevant near-term projects should be included in the analysis," and we mentioned the need for the Stanford Redwood City campus to be included. I just wanted to make sure that, that we've included all the other current projects that we have talked about with, for the, for example, the CAM process, the, you know, the medical center, whether that's in there, or I should say, the two hospitals, because they're both there. I wasn't sure whether the Stanford Shopping Center expansion took place after these counts were done or before. That's just, again, a technical question, just wanting to make sure that that's included. And of course, the CAM itself, now that it's, it's been approved. But certainly wanted to encourage you to add those items, you know, add the items that are not included in their analysis onto the list to make sure that they're, that what comes out of it. On that same page, under F, we've mentioned that on specific mitigation measures, I-280 northbound ramp, Sand Hill Road, which when I read it in the draft DIR, I was kind of surprised, because that's not a peak direction in my opinion, but whatever. It says a fair share contribution is not adequate, also in the El Camino-Rial intersections, a fair share contribution is not adequate. Can you just tell me, is there a rationale behind it? Is it, and if so, we should probably include that for why that fair share is, contribution is not adequate? Maybe it's because the majority of that traffic is Stanford, you know, responsible, or, I don't know, but I think just to say that without an explanation, it would be stronger if we had an explanation behind it.
There we go. We can add an explanation. Essentially, we were building on item E, which both of those mitigation measures, the Sand Hill 280 northbound ramp, as well as the El Camino intersections, were called out under background plus project conditions as an impact, and CEQA requires that project-level impacts be fully mitigated. So just a fair share contribution for a project-level impact is not an adequate mitigation measure. The improvement should really be constructed if an impact is identified at the background.
So it shouldn't be an adequate, fair share contribution is not an adequate mitigation measure?
Correct.
Okay, so perhaps add that onto it. Ray, I think you had a follow-up?
Yeah, it's an interesting, so the other issue that really should be talked about is the interaction between the Redwood City Medical Camp, Redwood City Medical Site. There's a dynamic interaction, it's like two magnets, right? Like if they're adding, if they're adding, they're adding density on the Stanford campus, and the expectation is that there's individuals at the Stanford campus headcount, that's going to have a dynamic interaction with the medical center going back and forth, yet they're only counted as headcount for the campus. We're still getting the impact on Bay Road and Middlefield. I'm not, I don't know how to account for that, so I'm going to leave that explanation, I'm going to leave that dilemma with you. But certainly there's an impact where if you have, I can see you adding a medical, you know, adding a medical facility like CAM on the campus, expanding it with the expectation that you're going to have teaching residents going back and forth through Redwood City between the area, you may not be capturing in that, when that development proposal comes forward, what the true nature is from each of those headcount, so.
Yeah, that's a great question. It's one that we started to explore with Stanford staff as we've met with them in developing the comments, and they've shared that the folks who will be stationed at Redwood City are really folks who won't have interaction with the campus, so they don't anticipate a lot of back-and-forth travel specifically, but I think we can, we can add that in and call it out here.
Yeah, Jean, in our last, when she came, when I asked that, that's what she said. She said, "They won't, they don't interact."
That's great.
"They're there, they don't come to Stanford." They're there, they don't come to Stanford.
We should create a special category, a class, so when the development project comes forward, they have to verify that. And I want to give a shout-out to Pam Jones for bringing the issue to my attention. But I think that on each case, you know, there's a representation that a government relations person makes to a council is different than what actually might happen when the project comes forward later on, ten years later.
And one final comment that I had under the housing section. So, and I certainly agree with all of the points that are raised. The $20 per square foot affordable housing impact fee is not adequate. I'm wondering whether we should ask for a dedication of funds that come out of this that actually goes into our BMR fund, rather than going into, you know, I know current practice and the, under the current GUP is that the affordable housing funds go into the Santa Clara Counties, right? Housing, but it's basically, and I know it can be spent and invested in a six-mile radius of the campus that includes Menlo Park. But the reality is, the, the actual committee that controls and allocates it rarely if ever provides any of it to Menlo Park projects now. So, the question is whether we ought to float the idea of having some portion actually, to allow us to have some control over a portion, a fair share, or, and I know that might be a little, you know, a little bit difficult to come up with the formula, but, but, but I was thinking about that the other day, just in light of, you know, or whether, you know, we need to be more aggressive in going after those, those funds. But the, the issue is trying to make sure that we are getting a fair share allocation toward affordable housing projects in Menlo Park, I think. I'll leave that up to your capable way of wording that.
Yeah, I think we'll have to pull in our housing folks. I am not a housing expert, but one way, we want to pursue a dedication of funds. One way could be looking at the regional housing needs assessment, the RENA allocation numbers for each jurisdiction and portioning the funds out that way. But that's something we could look at and get back to you on potential ways we could structure if we wanted to request dedicated funds.
Kirsten, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I just, I wanna, I like the idea, and I also wanted to just highlight, I think Palo Alto actually got some credit for affordable housing units that were created on the campus. They got RENA-numbered credits. So, you know, perhaps in this letter, we should also be asking for some, that Menlo Park be allowed to have some of the RENA-numbered credits as well. As well as what Mayor Otaki is requesting, that a dedicated source be created for any affordable housing anywhere in Menlo Park. I don't, with the six-mile radius, I don't know if that means that the money can be used anywhere in Menlo Park, or, I'm not sure where the cutoff is. So, somehow in the letter saying that it could be used anywhere would be helpful. And then again, also, that there are no occupancy of X amount of non-residential space until X percentage of, of housing is occupied. Does that make sense?
Can you say that one more time?
That, I don't have the number to put in, but I'm trying to say that, you know, somehow in here that we worded something with the housing where "no occupancy of non-residential space until X percentage of housing is occupied." And I don't...
I see. So, the phase in question of the academic space versus housing to be provided on campus?
Right, to make sure that the housing is provided before the academic space.
And I want to follow up on that, that in this section, encouragement for them to look at building housing for staff. Now, what's currently contemplated is additional staff to grow, or additional housing for the student, an increased student population, as well as faculty housing, which we definitely want to see them. They have about 2,000 faculty right now, and, and this, under, under this new GUP, they'll get closer to being able to, to make a substantial impact on, on that. The problem is, when I was, when I was doing research for the CAM, Stanford has 13,000 staff. And, and basically, you know, I mean, you know, we talk about with, with Facebook the importance of the jobs-housing balance and trying to encourage them for housing for, but yet there's this 13,000 staff on, at Stanford campus that are essentially commuting in. And while I give them a lot of credit for their TDM programs, that's a big number, right? So, so trying to have them start looking at, at housing for staff, I think, may be, given that this is a long-term GUP, I think would be a good encouragement for them. Any other comments? Okay, so with that, may I entertain a motion, but I'd like, I think that motion should delegate some latitude, well, first of all, the authority for Nikki, you and, and your colleagues to refine it and put it back together, you know, sort of with the comments that we've had. But also, if you'd like the subcommittee to review it one more time before it finally goes out. I don't know whether we have a council meeting before it.
You do not. So, this, the subcommittee would need to take one more look at the staff changes and just making sure they're consistent with what you're asking.
Okay.
So... I will second your motion, Mayor Otaki.
All right, fair enough.
The motion passes 4-0. Councilmember Carlton is absent.
And thank you again, Nikki, for your hard work on this. Okay, we're now at item G3, which is discussion to prepare for the City Council Goal Setting Meeting this coming Monday and the 2018 work plan. Our city manager, Alex McIntyre, will introduce the item.
Great. I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak slowly, because Chip is, as you may or may not know, Chip is recused from all Stanford matters, so he is in the City Hall Building right now and making his way quickly over here, and I'm just gonna entertain you for a quick second. No, let me kick this off. Chip will be here in a minute. He's gonna do the bulk of the presentation. You know, as you know, each year, we do a council goal setting, and there's multiple purposes for this. And really primarily for us, it's to build the work plan for the coming year with an eye towards really building a budget for the June, for council's consideration in June 2018. There are several pieces of the work plan, again, that the, this council will be very familiar with. We have sort of three key pieces we ask you to consider. One, our budget principles, you know, as we revise our sort of how we frame a budget. What is it, what's the council interested in, making sure we're sort of following certain philosophies on budget. Number two is what we call the council procedures manual. It's really the rules under which you all operate and kind of govern yourselves and keep yourselves in check with regards to how we run meetings, certain issues with the Brown Act and whatnot. So, we've met, we've asked for some modest changes to those. And then finally, there is the work plan document itself. And to remind the council, there's a couple of things that feed the work plan. And the first thing we did was, at the last council meeting, you know, every two years, we do a community survey. The community survey really is meant to help the council hear from the community its general sentiments about the services provided by the City of Menlo Park. Secondly, then, sorry, secondly, then, is just the whole idea of trying to have as many public meetings as we can, so that the public feels as though they have an opportunity to give you all feedback about what that work plan should include in the current year. I think last week, not only during the survey, we had an info item on the work plan. We closed out the 2017 work plan in December. Tonight's meeting is another public meeting, so people, you can hear feedback from the public with regards to what their interest might be in the work plan for the coming year. Next week, on the 29th, we will have a council meeting, the work plan session itself, in the afternoon. Then there is one more chance for the public to weigh in also, and that would be on February 6th, when we ask you to actually adopt the work plan. So, lots of steps ahead for the council to hear from the public, hear from yourselves, hear from staff with regards to the coming year and what may or may not be the most important things. On the 29th, a couple of things that we're going to dig a little bit deeper into with you are things like milestones. We have an existing work plan, which, which, as you know, the work plan very commonly is a multi-year work plan. Very rarely is it designed to start on January 2018 and finish on December 2018. In other words, they carry into the next year. We're carrying forward work plan items from 2017, which we fully anticipated doing. We will give you milestones on those. We also have sort of the, the top 15, it's actually technically 18 items, that, that we will also give you more milestones, so you understand an item in the 2018 year may not get done in 2018, but we'll show you on December 31st where that project will be, so that you can sort of monitor that as we give you that, that feedback. The other issue is, it's an ongoing conversation we always have, is the issue of capacity. You know, our ability as staff to carry forward the work the council wants from us. But there's two more capacity points, I think, we should also be aware of, and that's the council's capacity to carry some really important matters forward, and the community's capacity to sort of see what kinds of changes may be coming their way. And changes viewed both, in three ways, positive, negative, and neutral. So, just making sure, we're very aware of that and understanding what we're doing. Finally, there will be, this year, I'm gonna work very hard with the five of you to see if we can find a way to have you come up with the top five items that shall get done, based upon the milestones. Done, meaning we will accomplish the milestones we lay out. And I think that's gonna be hard for you, and I think it's gonna be a difficult exercise. And something I had mentioned in my evaluation several months ago now was this notion of the ruthless prioritization, I think, we need to do, and you need to do, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna beg you to do, so that it's abundantly clear what you expect from us and what those top five things are we shall get done. And again, we have 18 of those items that we've laid out for you, and we're gonna ask you to narrow them to five. Now, just 'cause we've come up with 18 doesn't mean you don't have your own, and the community doesn't have its own. And again, so we have yet again another list of items for you that we will walk you through later as well, of items we've heard through the course of the year, either from the dais, individual conversations with council members, community members coming forward through the course of the year, including tonight, asking for certain kinds of action items for the current year. So, all this is coming, I'm gonna hand this off to Chip in a second and let him walk you through it. This is really meant to be a quasi-study session to get us to next week. So, Chip, it's all yours.
Thank you. Chip Taylor, Assistant City Manager, Mayor Council. We'll go over kind of tonight, and it's more about, let's say, questions and comments that we want to hear from the council, and we'll kind of lay everything out here. So, the first thing is the budget principles. So, every year, the council kind of reaffirms or readopts the budget principles. They're in your packet. We've kind of tried to, let's say, narrow the focus of those a little bit into four top bulleted items. We've tried to keep most of what was already in the proposed budget, or what was in the budget principles, and lay out the four items. We have promote the city's long-term fiscal sustainability, enhance and maintain core city services and infrastructure, manage staff capacity to efficiently deliver services to the community. And there's one important one in there that we'll probably want some discussion on, on the 29th, related to the overhiring, or really, it's more about kind of the overlap between when somebody may be, let's say, retiring, and we want to hire somebody into the position so that they can work together before the person leaves. And then we have communicate the city's financial position. So, those are, those are the budget principles that we want council to discuss, and then reaffirm, that helps the, helps us build the budget as we go forward in June. The next document that the council sees every year and potentially has comments or changes on are the Procedures Manual. And with the Procedures Manual, we're proposing, from the staff side, just a few clarifications in a couple of areas. And so, it's something that we would definitely want council to discuss, especially on the 29th. And really to kind of focus more on effective administration and facilitate sound decisions. The first one is really about remote teleconferencing of meetings and kind of doing that more by exception-only rather than the rule. And the second one was more clarifying the council's policy about late-night meetings and how late they go, and just putting some language about why that may be appropriate to end at a certain time. So, it's more of a clarification aspect there. Now, jumping into the actual work plan, so this, I wanted to talk a little bit about the 2017 work plan and how things are being carried over. So, in the 2017 work plan, we had an info item last week that kind of clarified where everything was for the 2017 work plan. And on that, we completed 12 work plan items. So, a lot of the projects that are on the work plan are ongoing or multi-year projects, and the milestones don't necessarily complete the project, actually, complete the project. In some cases, though, the milestone is the project is completed. And one example is a solid waste rate schedule that was adopted by the city council. So, that's done, it's completely off the list, it's over with, and, and so it was completed. And so, we have 12 of those items that came off completely. We had some projects that were postponed through the course of the year, just based on other shifting issues and shifting priorities. One of those was some of the housing element implementation programs that we're in planning. We had some staff vacancies, and the council also wanted to work on the EV chargers, and so we kind of refocused some of our efforts toward that. As well as a smaller project, gatehouse fence replacement, small project, but we did shift that because of the library sighting, and so we wanted to figure out where the library might go before we replace the fence there, so that one kind of slowed down. Couple of examples of how some projects get postponed. And then, a lot of the projects on the work plan are multi-year projects. Perfect example is the Transportation Master Plan. It's a two-year project plus, and so it is in process. We did do a lot of work last year to get the consultant hired and get the RFP together and that sort of thing, but at the end of the day, it is ongoing or anticipated to be ongoing, pending the outcome of the goal setting. So, then to jump into the 2018 work plan and how we're gonna move forward. So, slightly different than previous years, as Alex talked about, we're looking at these kind of three distinct categories for council to talk about next week, next Monday. The first one is really our, what we're calling the top five priorities, or that we have 18 priorities that council, or that the staff is putting forward that we think through discussions over the year are very high-profile projects. And we're gonna look for the council to try to prioritize those to the top five. Again, the top five would be projects where we would never change the milestone. We would move those projects forward no matter what. All of the other projects would still move forward, they would still have milestones, but if we have any sort of capacity issues, we would shift those resources from the lower priority projects to the top five to ensure that they don't change. Then we have a lot of the ongoing work plan items. Those are in your packet as well, so those are things taken from 2017 and shifted onto the work plan. And then we have the potential initiatives, new work plan items that, really, this is where the trade-off discussion has to take place. It's a new item, it, we don't necessarily have the capacity to do it, so there might need to be a trade-off of moving it onto the work plan and taking something off. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on those. So, the top priority list, I'm gonna go through these. I know I hate in PowerPoint to actually read off each one of these, but I do want to do that, 'cause I think it's important. They are in your packet, but we'll go through these. I just kind of grouped them in groups of three or so, three to five. No particular order whatsoever, we just put them on the list. So, those items are, we have the Water System Master Plan that we've been working toward, Downtown Parking Garage, whatever process, that moving that process forward, the Chrysler Pump Station out near Bayfront Expressway, Willow 101 interchange and work ongoing with that, the Transportation Master Plan. Next grouping, we have Chilco Streetscape and Sidewalk, working with Facebook on some of the construction related to that. The Downtown El Camino Specific Plan by a new review, that's another big one. San Francisco Creek Upstream Project, so that's something we don't have control of, but likely is gonna come in the door, and we're gonna have to deal with in some way. Information Technology Master Plan, this kind of we use throughout the whole organization of making us all more efficient moving through all of these projects. Next grouping, we've got Ravenswood Caltrain Grade Separation Study, that's still kind of in process. Middle Avenue Pedestrian Bicycle Crossing Study that's in process. The Stanford University GUP Project, and earlier you discussed that, and probably a lot more work to go related to that. We've got two organizational studies. The first one here is the Organizational Study of Public Works Maintenance Services, and kind of making sure we have everything aligned correctly in that group. Same thing for Development- Same thing for development services, and that crosses community development as well as the public works department. We have employee engagement and organizational development to build the employees, district elections, and this is kind of a unique one because it might have to be one of your top five just because we have to do it, so that's something that we really need to consider as part of this. Emergency water supply project, emergency wells that we're working on, and then the library improvements or library system improvements and that kind of newer project that's come in the door that we've been working on. So that's kind of the top 18 that we would look for you to prioritize the five next Monday, so that'll be kind of the focus. Then we have ongoing work plan items. So these again are this, I didn't list all of them because there's too many to list here, but those are coming forward from 2017, and so those are a lot of those multi-year items. And then the second component, the last category in that ongoing list are the CIP projects that moved from year two in the CIP, the five-year CIP, up to year one. So as we move things forward in the CIP, those items are listed in your packet, and so those move forward to year one. So those certainly open for discussion as well, as well. And then the last list that we have here is the potential work plan items, so these are the new items that we've heard throughout the year. Again, I'll read these off again just so it's real clear what they are. A couple at a time, we have the, in no particular order, again, Dunbarton corridor coordination, new information even more recently about potential Facebook partnering with something, so that could move forward in some kind of manner. We've got Middlefield Road and Linfield crosswalk, which we've heard a lot about, and that's the hawk signal near the fire station. We've got the West Menlo Triangle annexation that the council heard, and it asked us to put this on this list for discussion, for potential prioritization. Charter City, which came up last week. The quiet zone discussion came up last weekend tonight about the city being a quiet zone. Public art, there's been discussion about public art and what to do with that. Got the schools initiative that there's been discussions about revenue initiatives that have come out more recently about the library or maybe other projects, revenue and ballot measures that could come. And then the Sharon Road sidewalk installation came up through one of the grant discussions of potentially a stretch of Sharon Road of adding some sidewalk there. So it's kind of that list of, and this is that list that we need to have that trade-off discussion on, how do these fit into the work plan because we can't just move them in there, we've got to move something off of the work plan. So to go a little bit more detail, Alex talked about the agendas for the upcoming meetings, I'll just go through a few of these things. So on the 29th, we'll be doing a financial update, give council an idea of financial position, staffing discussion, kind of where we've been throughout the last year and where we're going. We've got an overall capacity discussion that we'll talk about, especially in the transportation area, discussion of the budget principles that are in the packet tonight, the procedures manual, and then just the overall work plan and any questions or comments or discussion that needs to take place there, and ultimately culminating in a prioritization of those 18, or whatever number those become, into the top five that will be the highest priority projects. Again, all projects will continue to move forward, it's just if we need to shift resources, we would shift them to the top five first before we shift them to other places. And then on February 6, depending on the outcome of the 29th, we would bring all of those items back for adoption, so the council would adopt and reaffirm those. And so then tonight, what we're looking for council is really mostly just any questions or comments that you have. The discussion will mainly take place next Monday during the goal-setting, and we've got the budget principles, the procedures manual, and the work plan categories that we discussed. And just as a big reminder, I put in a big blue box here, next Monday, 1 o'clock, not 7 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock. We do have lunch from 12 to 1, so council's certainly welcome to come for that. And then 1 o'clock over in the Ariaga Family Recreation Center at the Oak Room. And with that, we've got all department heads here available for questions as well if you need anything.
Great, thank you, Chip, and I assume the public is welcome to attend the goal-setting. So I know we have a couple of, yes, we got public comment cards. Before we get to them, I did have a couple clarification questions, actually had a comment. I sensed that there was some skepticism in tone in, in the thought that elected representatives can prioritize. I think we are up for the challenge anyway. And, but having said all that, I did have a question about milestones. Alex, you had mentioned about, about further definition of some milestones, which I think are really key. Is there a way we can get that before we walk in on Monday?
Yeah, so the milestones will be delivered to you in your packet on Thursday.
Okay, great.
This coming Thursday.
Great, so we'll be able to see that.
Right.
It'll give us a chance to, to look at that. And let me go to, to some, to public comment here. Andrew Boone first, followed by Henry Riggs. Andrew, good evening again.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki and city council members. I have brought up before, multiple times, one item that I would like you to consider adding to your work plan for this year, and that's a minimum wage ordinance for the city of Menlo Park. Forty, around forty-something cities in the country have established their own minimum wage ordinances, mostly those are high cost of living areas just like Menlo Park that have recognized that the minimum wage set by the state in that area is inadequate for people to meet their basic needs, and that's exactly the same situation Menlo Park has. Having the same minimum wage as the state is just not appropriate for Menlo Park, or really any city in San Mateo County or most of the Bay Area, the cost of living is just higher. So if the minimum wage is the same, people are living in a greater degree of poverty who are working here in Menlo Park and working for us and are part of our community, and it's a moral obligation you have to raise the minimum wage. Many other cities in, especially this particular part of the Bay Area, the Peninsula and the South Bay, many have adopted a higher minimum wage than the state. Mountain View and Sunnyvale, the minimum wage is already $15 per hour, and nobody has had to lay anybody off or any of, any of the other horror stories that opponents of raising the minimum wage say happen. They haven't lost, you know, workers, everything's going on fine except for, you know, people who desperately need a little bit more money in their pocket now have it. And it really, I can't imagine that this particular item would take much time for the staff to consider. The ordinance itself is very simple, there are many examples, and you need to have, you know, a public outreach of one or two community meetings is what other cities have done, is what I've seen Redwood City do. Please add raising the minimum wage to your work plan for this year. Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, just before you leave, I know earlier this evening you also spoke about the El Camino Real Corridor Study, and I just wanted to make sure that, that that comment is also related to our plan as well.
Yes, I think that project is one that is also appropriate for, you know, being revisited this year.
Thank you. Henry Riggs, followed by Jen Woolison.
Mayor Otaki and council members. Henry Riggs, Calley Lane, and thank you for your attention to the Stanford expansion. As you prepare for the goal-setting meeting, you are tempted to divert time and attention to a conditional, excuse me, a conditional gift towards a new city library. I trust you have seen the comments on Town Square and on the council email log. It's pretty easy to calculate how many there are pro and how many con, since they all seem to be in one camp. I'd like to suggest some unmet, unmet needs in our city instead, and these vary widely in scope and type. The paving in our city, for example, whether it's Ravenswood, Middlefield, Santa Cruz Avenue, Marsh Road, it's not just that it's embarrassing for a city in Silicon Valley, it's also rather uncomfortable to drive on or ride a bike on. In some cases, it's dangerous to ride a bike on. Speaking of the library, why not expand evening hours? The idea of a library not being open after dinner is rather odd to me. The idea that it's closed on holidays is rather odd. What about the Bell Haven Library? Traffic light programming. For those of us who must drive, and there are rather a lot of us, the idea of sitting at a red arrow while no cars approach or cross for up to a minute just strikes you the wrong way. There are quite a number of those in our town. The El Camino Real bottleneck, are we going to make that a monument to our city? Here's a use for our funds and our time, pension debt. We either have to negotiate our rate of payment down or pass it on to our kids. Code enforcement. We have one code enforcement officer, I'm told a second is on the way, who work eight to five, Monday to Friday. That's a joke. Sidewalks. Anyone walked Flood Triangle other than our city manager? Talk about an embarrassment. Our planning division needs help in coming up with streamlining and design guidelines. Our utilities are not even begun being undergrounded anywhere except our parking structures. I could go on. So let me just urge you to rethink the temptation to build an impressive new building that the larger public has not asked for and cover these other unmet needs instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Jen Woolison, followed by Pamela Jones. Hi, Jen.
Good evening again. I want to echo Mr. Riggs' comment that he just made about focusing on the little things rather than a big thing. And I know you've received my email and emails from people who I've emailed advocating for continued focus on safe routes to school, the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Street Study, the forwarding of the citywide Safe Routes to School program. I do want to address the Fire District partnership on the middle Linfield-Santa Monica crossing and how that is an opportunity to make a difference, hopefully for little investment that can make a real difference in a lot of kids' lives and a lot of your citizens' lives. And then the Sharon Road crosswalks, I think we need to start addressing some of these gaps in our networks that we have, and I know it's not as fun or sexy as some of these bigger marquee groundbreaking projects, but I think they make life better, safer for most of the residents. And when you go into your goal-setting priority, I would ask you to kind of go up and think about kind of the values and the mission and, and what it is we want for our residents here in Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Pamela Jones. Pam, while you're starting to speak, would you like me to distribute these to you?
Yes, please. Good evening again. I'm one of those people that I, usually my thoughts don't come together until the last minute, so that's why you end up getting the paper, my ideas, late. First of all, I want to commend the staff for the work that they've done this past year because I was involved with the, with the plan, your plan, last year and watched it diligently, kept going through my binder to see where we were with things, and they've done a remarkable job under some really difficult circumstances. I also want to thank the council for your diligence with Stanford. That is critical, that you're paying attention to the level that I don't think anybody else has because they are Stanford. With that being said, the document that I put together here, and it was, it's just really a rough draft, I, most of the items, 11 of them are from the Bell Haven visioning 2013, 2015, Connect Menlo, M2, GPAC, and it was the result of that information. So I took those, 11 of those items and put them in the various categories and the format that was presented that you used last year. And interestingly enough, that a number of the things that deal with traffic, and especially along Willow Road, which I don't think we can really wait until we have, have completed all of the studies that are being done, some of the practical things that can be done right now does have to do with the lights and the sequencing, just as Mr. Riggs had stated. Some of the things that are included here, for example, and this is critical regardless of where we go with the funding for the main library, but we need, I want to make sure that in this year that you have the library, that you have the next step in there, which is the library site and a funding study. Because if we put that off until the next cycle, 2018, 19, then that means that we're going to be out maybe 10 years before we actually would have that plan together and the funding with it. And I'm assuming that we'll be able to work through the challenges with the funding for the main library. Although, I have to say this, unfortunately, we became, we were in a position where sometimes looking a gift horse in the mouth, we need to be careful of what that gift means. At any rate, I hope you look through this, this document. As I said, that it coincides with what came up in the visioning, things for the senior center, an outdoor awning, additional staff there, and the only really big thing is a restroom in Ognete Harris. At any rate, I will see you Monday, and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pamela. Any further cards on the side?
No.
Okay. Vice Mayor Mueller, I know you've, you've got a flight later, so let's start with you.
Okay. Yeah, so real quick, there's just some items. I saw you guys had an education initiative bucket. I just want to share with council, the formation document for the Ravenswood Equity and Education JPAs completed, I'll be sharing that with you guys. It's based on the San Francisco Creek JPA formation documents. It's been reported the district has a significant funding shortfall this year that they're trying to address. The parking structure, I'm glad that's on there. The one thing that's not on there that I want to talk about as council is entertainment use in our downtown. It's something that we've highlighted, I think now for a number of years that we wanted. There's opportunity to do that, obviously, with the parking structure, also opportunity to do that with the Guild Theater. How we go about doing that is something that I think is going to require some staff time, so I'd like to see that add to the list. I really, I see the library in the list as, Bell Haven Library is married to the main library project. I think we might consider separating those two from each other. The reason being, I don't think we believe we have support for bond for the main library, and I think that we should have the option as a council to try to tell staff to move forward with one and not the other. Transparency, calendar ordinance, I mean, excuse me, transparency council or policy, I brought that forward earlier this year and was told we'd look at that when it came time for doing our goal, our work plan this year, so I'd like that added. I don't know if it'll, I don't know what will happen with it, but I do want to have the discussion. I was happy to see the Sharon Road sidewalk and the Hawk crosswalks added, and we said that would be coming back too, so it's good it's there. One thing that's not there, and this leads me back, so back when we talked about at the turn of the year policies, things to look at for this year, there was a robust discussion around cut-through in the Willows, and we opted not to add it to the work plan at that time. I know going forward into the next year, we are going to be having a discussion about cut-through near the new Greenheart, new Greenheart project once it opens. I'm just absolutely convinced of it. It's, one of the cut-through areas is not through Menlo Park, it's through Atherton near Ensonall, but I think that it's going to require a multi-jurisdictional effort to look at cut-through, and I'd like to at least start those discussions rather than wait for it to fester and happen to us. So it's something that we're going to need to talk about, and I don't know if we move forward with it now then, but at least have the discussion. I actually do support putting the minimum wage discussion in front of the council and the, and the priority list. I don't know what will, what will happen there, but I think it's been raised, it's an issue we should look at, and certainly there are a lot of jurisdictions all around us who have actually dealt with it. And then finally, I appreciated Mrs. Jones' suggestion to do the cut-through in Bell Haven as well. We are, there's quite a bit of development taking place all around of that area now, we've heard that for quite some time. So I definitely do want to, do want to go ahead and add that, it's something to look forward, look to discuss. And I see Nikki shaking her head yes, so you guys might already be doing it.
Yeah, and both the Willows, cut-through traffic is on the list, the neighborhood traffic study was from last year, and so that'll be carried forward, and the Bell Haven cut-through analysis is in process as well. It was through with Facebook, a partnership that they were required to do.
All right, so then the only cut-through study I just want to make sure that we look at is surrounding the Greenheart project, just to, just on the council discussion for the priority. I know that we're going to have to be careful with our time, but I just, I just have a feeling that's coming, so. And that are all my comments. And in terms of like debating each one, we can talk about that at the meeting next week. And in terms of like debating each one, we can talk about that at the meeting next week.
Councilmember Keith.
Oh, thank you. Thank you to staff for bringing this back tonight so that we can be really focused on Monday, as I know we always are. And looking at the list, I know there are a lot of great things that we are going to look at accomplishing this year, as we did every year in the past. I want to go down a couple of notes that I took as well. I, you know, would like to see, and I know you mentioned this, the Arts Commission, I would like to see a discussion on the Arts Commission. I'd also like to see 1% for the arts. I know, I think, and Mr. McClure, could you correct me if I'm wrong? Did we used to have a 1% for the arts? Yeah, we did.
We did for a few years, and then the council repealed it.
Right. And so, I would like to go back to adding that. I think at this time when we have all this development going on, that promoting art in our community is really important. And I know, let's see, at Middlefield and Willow, on what used to be Late for the Train, the restaurant, there's a beautiful mural, you can still see the mural, but that was created when we had the 1% for the arts. It's just one example. And sadly, I don't have a lot of other examples because it wasn't in place very long. But it's, I think it's important, and I think art really makes your community more exciting and fun. And if you go to other communities and you see art, it just adds vibrancy to a community. So I'd like to see that. The minimum wage, I am interested in looking at that again. And I would hope that perhaps we could utilize what other cities have done and not have to spend a lot of staff time on it, because I think there are several examples from San Mateo to Mountain View that we could look at and hopefully do something. The Guild Theater, I think, is also something that is a great opportunity, that I know we've all spoken with some people about this, and it's really something that Monday we're going to have to talk about because there's an opportunity to do something there that would create this great live entertainment venue for Menlo Park. And it is going to require us to prioritize it too, I imagine. So I want that on the list. El Camino Real, I would love to have that on the list too. I think when we do studies and we shelve them, it's, it's just not a good use of our, of all our staff time and our taxpayer dollars. And we did do a study that is becoming stale, I guess, as we speak. And it would be a good idea to bring that back and either, you know, look at it to adopt or to say, we're not interested in doing this. But I think we just sort of shelved it for a while. I am going to bring up the idea also of an employee head tax, and it's something I've talked to Alex about and some other council people from other cities, primarily south of us, with large tech companies. And talking about an employee head tax perhaps to fund transportation issues within our own city. And it's something that we talked about to start off this meeting, transportation issues. The Hawk signal, I think that is also something I want to see discussed for goal-setting. And Alex and I talked about this today too, and the complications of, it's not just one signal, is it? It's a couple on Middlefield, and the question is, it's just not one signal. It's a little bit more complicated. So I think it would be a good idea to discuss it if we want to have this rise to one of our goals. I know Marcia Abramowitz was here earlier, and she's brought up the quiet zone issue for one of our crossings, and so I think that should be on the list to discuss. And let me just pull up my notes, if you give me one moment. My phone closed. The parking structure, that's been on our list for, I think you have that on the list, Chip. That was already on the list anyway. But moving forward with something to do with the parking structure, and I see Mr. Cogan nodding his head, I would like to see that on our list as well. I see the big issues, right? And we all do. There's the Facebook expansion on Willow, there's also the Ravenswood and the other grade crossings. I mean, they are big issues, and they're going to take a lot of staff time. And Alex, we gave you authority to hire more people. How is that going?
We're going to talk about this more in detail on Monday, but it's not going well. We are having a very difficult time recruiting talent.
So, so even though we've put aside this money and said, please, yes, hire more planners and so that we can keep projects going, you've not been super successful at hiring.
We, our attrition rate's fairly high, and our vacancy rate is high. So we have turnover, and we have, when people leave, it's just harder and harder to replace them because we are finding ourselves less and less competitive.
And that's due to many reasons, but salary and housing.
A lot of reasons. Compensation's a piece of it, cost of housing, commutes, all those, all those really fold into this whole conversation. Again, we really will cover that detail in depth on Monday.
Right, because it goes directly to what we can get done. I mean, I think we, we have great ideas and great plans, but if we don't have, if we don't have the staff to do it, it's not going to happen. So I think that will be the challenge, obviously, for all of us on Monday, to drill down and decide what are the great opportunities that, you know, we want to keep moving forward. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, thank you. A lot have been mentioned. One thing I think, I guess I'm going to ask, Chip and I, we've done this so many times together, so, you know, it's always the, I actually don't think we've ever really been able to solve the challenge of having too many projects, because there's unanticipated projects that come in. And there's projects that I think become very seemingly attractive and easy, and then they take a lot more time. And that's, that's the bigger problem, usually. And I'll use example that Willow's traffic study with 2011, right? All that time, and the thing didn't go through because the community couldn't agree. And I'm wondering if there's, if we could talk Monday about just how we could rank by projected staff impact, right? Don't say how many hours, but you say these, this. It could seem like it's not a big deal, and it actually might be much more impactful to staff than you'd ever think, based on it having to go through administration office, then through multiple departments. Or it's with a department that's completely strapped and will be, right? And there'll be no light at the end of the tunnel there. And so, having some kind of advisory, you know, process in this meeting to say, look, here's a red box for this department to be able to handle this, or these two departments are strapped. And so, while it's in this list, it's prioritized, it's somewhat popular, it doesn't fit because we're not going to be able to get to it, and we have to be realistic. And so, I feel like that's where our tough situation is, because it, you know, council mares can't know this, no matter how long they're up here. So, that kind of guidance I think is necessary, because even as I just review all these, I look at it and go, we're not going to, we're not going to get to that. We're not going to get to that. We've got redistricting. And then also putting that against, I have down here, the urgencies, right? So, safety, you know, and liability, safety issues for residents, the city, litigation, which ranks with these, you know, the redistricting and, or there may be one-time opportunities of funding, like grants or, and things, we do take advantage of pretty well county agency type things. We were able to get those donations. I know there's a whole lot of campaigning going on, on something that doesn't have anybody to campaign for it, but, you know, these are opportunities. So are the opportunities that will be lost? And are we sure of that? And so having some kind of review of, because it's, it becomes a little arbitrary if we don't. When I hear, when I see it seemingly innocuous, single-family residential requirements and guidelines, ah, so simple. That's, that absolutely destroys the culture of the community and has multiple times, and staff. And it's just, it has to swim in reality, and so we need to be, to be as strong a council as we can, we need staff to be very blunt and show that. We don't have staff for that. We have an experience of not being able to hire. We do not anticipate being able to do these things. Council's going to have to figure that out and react to it, because otherwise I think we will invariably be adding things, adding things. And I don't feel like we are in a situation where we can add a lot right now that's going to have severe impacts, given where we are and what we have on the near-term kind of horizon. Stanford GUP, other things like that, they consume you, and they're going to. So, I don't want to add anymore tonight. I have some. But I don't see it happening. I want to support some kind of mechanism to say, these are downtown, you know, or specific plan type of fulfillment things, so when you say the Guild, I say that's part of that, right? We're trying to enhance, we have a structure, what can we do with this thing, or something else. I see those as some things we can, we can figure out, but maybe not, you know, and maybe come and go red box. And I want to acknowledge that. I will acknowledge the red box or whatever the stop sign is that you give me, because I, I'm, I think the city manager has stated this for about six to eight months, we can't hire, and we can't get the staff in, and the staff remaining are getting slammed. And it's, this is a path to a place we don't want to be as a great city, so. I think everything sounds super, and every road should be paved with diamonds. They won't be. We spent $4 million on infrastructure, on paving, last year. There's still streets that need to be paved. I think we need to be judicious. I think we need to be completely sober in this process on Monday, and we have to eliminate things off this list and sacrifice them because we have the big things. And that's where I'll end it right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. I wanted to go through a couple of edits or comments on the budget principles and City Council's Procedure Manual, so that they'll make it into, before we come back on Monday to them. On the budget principles, first of all, very much appreciate how staff has, has put them into categories. I thought that was a good way of making them easier to read and putting them in the, and I also did recognize the addition of some, and support programs and initiatives that strengthens Menlo Park's standing as an employer of choice to, I presume that needs to reduce turnover, I think there's a word missing in that, but retain and attract highly qualified personnel. I do think that this is a follow-on to what Rich had just mentioned is a key constraint for us. The proactively manage the loss of institutional knowledge through succession planning efforts, including the ability to quote-unquote "over-hire" critical positions within the overall authorized headcount. I'd like to, I think I've mentioned this to you, Alex, can we come up with a different word than "over-hire"? I know that that's a technical term, but I know the intent was when someone gives notice that they're leaving, you immediately, you know, you immediately advertise for the position and, and if possible, bring a new person on board and have them overlap during that time.
That's correct. And "over-hire" is a term of art we use, but for the sake of better comprehension by the public.
Transparency.
Transparency. The idea that positions can overlap and that we have, that the city manager has the authority to be able to determine where that's going to make sense.
That would be great. Thank you. In the policy manual, I think there's a section on the order of business, and I think we spoke about this, that like council member reports, which is item two, should be moved to the end, and then, and then study sessions moved up, commission reports moved up to more parallel what is our typical agenda order. The, I certainly support the, the change rather to the, about the conducting business at a late hour. We tend not to actually take a motion at 11 o'clock, but I do think we all agree with the point that, that our productivity decreases the closer we get to midnight, so I think that's understood by all of us. The, I also wanted to, I perhaps ask staff to revisit the, or perhaps refine this remotely, participating in city council meetings by telephone conference call shall be by exception only. That seems pretty strong, when I do think sometimes we're traveling domestically and it's easier potentially to call in. So, I don't know if you want to kind of reward that in a way that, but, but the key point is, is there is not an expectation that you have to.
Correct.
If it's really difficult for, you know, for your timing, catching a plane or what have you. And I do support making sure that that's there, but to the extent it's possible, you know, I think we shouldn't discourage it, is the point there. So I'll leave it up to you to come up with that. Finally, on the prioritization, can we, Chip, can you put up the slide, which is the agenda for, for goal-setting? Yeah, so if there's any way that we can move this whole, so from financial update to discussing the City Council Procedures Manual and to compress that down into the first hour and a half, the reason why I'm mentioning that is because I'm getting the, so not only do I believe we need an hour just for prioritizing top-five priority work plan eyes, because in the past years when we've done that, we've had a half an hour, and, and we've been running around with our dots, and I don't think we've had a quality discussion. Someone called it horse trading, but the point being is that we could have a discussion about, you know, about that. So I think we need an hour on that. I also think we need an hour before it on this, both discussion of miles, you know, we'll have milestones, but also I'm sensing we're going to be moving items in and out.
Right.
So, you know, we've had the additional items that are all very good suggestions that have come up, to move them onto the work plan, but I assume that you would want, as a ground rule, for us to follow before we come in on Monday. If we have the intention of adding those to the work plan, we have to have in mind what we're taking out of the work plan.
Correct.
When we add those. I think that's important for us to think about over the weekend, so we're ready to propose that, and so that the overall work plan doesn't get any longer.
And let me offer just one slight twist to what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and that is, keep in mind, and we talk about this each year, every item's not equal. Just because it's an item on the list doesn't mean it has the same oomph. And so, keep in mind, adding something to transportation and taking something away from community services, the math doesn't work.
Yep.
So it's one of those, what goes into that bucket, something has to come out of that same bucket. And I think most of you probably understand where all these projects fall in general. We'll walk you through it more closely next, on Monday. But just keeping that in mind as well, is the trade-off has to be meaningful and real and significant. Again, a rec coordinator can't do the work of a transportation engineer.
Okay. And, and I would also add to that then, in addition to getting those items onto the larger work plan, we may, if we want to move an item from the work plan to the top 18 list, such as for example, if we wanted to put safe routes onto that, that means that we need to take something off of that top 18 list, particularly transportation-oriented, I think is what I'm hearing from that last.
I mean, without a doubt, that's exactly what we're talking about, is if something's going to come up that is very clearly owned by a particular division or department, that same division or department has to be, something has to come off. And that's really the difficulty of this exercise.
So if I may, so going back to the agenda, I definitely think we need an hour for that, because moving in and out means we're going to have a discussion about the item to add as well as the item to take off. So each of those moves will be a two-topic discussion. I think we're going to need an hour for that. So, so as I look through this, you know, we've got a lot of other items, but to the extent we can get, get through that in the first, you know, hour and a half to two hours max, that will make it easier for us to, I think, get to the goal, which I know, I agree with you, and I've agreed with you for some time now, that we do need to get to a top-five and a consensus around the larger work plan around it.
Most of this will be written up in the staff report, and as council reviews the staff report, makes its own notes, and to the extent you can share with me in advance, that's great too. Our goal really is to have you guys focused and spend as much time as possible on this whole prioritization. The other stuff will just fall into place, candidly, in my, in my estimation.
Perfect. Perfect. I'm delighted. Looking forward to it. Councilmember Keith, did you have any comments?
Well, I just realized, thank you. Well, I just realized, thank you for, for that. Um, I did not comment on the, uh, original two things you'd asked us about.
Policies and procedures.
Right. Um, and the only comment briefly on attachment B, I had the same circle over, over-hire, please just change it to overlap. It just, and we already talked about that. And then, uh, you had two changes on our policies and procedures. Um, I mean, I, I, I'm fine with the first one, which was, um, remotely participate by exception. I mean, I think it's exception now anyway, so I'm not sure that that totally changes anything, to tell you the truth. It's by exception if you're traveling, so. Um, and then on the number eight, conducting business at a late hour, you know, we have a policy that actually, we were, it says it's the council policy, um, at regular meetings, to end by midnight unless there's a three-fourths vote taken by 11:00 PM. And I, you know, I see this policy, and I guess we just stopped following it, is what happened. But, um, I think when I first got on council, we were following it. Were you there then? I think you were. Um, we, well, anyway.
Well, I think we also had a sort of acclamation. We, we, we look around, hey, and it wasn't at 11, it was usually at 11:55 that we would.
Yeah, almost midnight.
Sort of look at each other, hey, do you guys, okay, going past midnight? So it wasn't quite to the.
I guess, so I almost, uh, would prefer to just follow the policy again, which I know we haven't done for a number of years, because it actually is a policy that, uh, formally says something, you know, specific, that you end at midnight or you take a vote at 11, um, rather than, you put this word, these words in here, the late night meetings, you know, deter public participation and can affect, it's like, yeah, we know that, and it's just sort of a subjective thing to say that's obvious to me. So it doesn't really, it doesn't really do anything at all. Whereas if we actually followed a policy that we originally had, I think that, um, makes more sense to me.
Okay, I have one, sure. It, it, to the mayor, I'm sorry. Um, I think if the language said, because I think really the authority of the, of the agenda is really mayor and, and city manager with, with, um, the senior department, um, what, what the priorities are. So if it said, you know, mayor, you know, mayor, city manager will, you know, accordingly try to manage the agenda to avoid having multiple major issues that drag, you know, that push you, because you can't stop a major issue if it starts at 10 o'clock at, at 11 or 12. And once it's set up that way, the dominoes fall. So there is this inherent, it's, it's not a council policy as much as it is an encouragement of leadership on the council to manage that. If it gets away from us, then you have the language that says, you know, and it, it can, right? Um, but if it's set up from the beginning, you can see it, an agenda early where you're like, mm, I don't think we're gonna get out of this one. I think that just needs, just to be a little bit more, more firm on that. And, and that requires some disappointment, because people want their things taken up, everybody wants to discuss these things a certain amount of time, the buildings, developers want their projects coming in as fast as they can, all those things. We just may have to get a little tighter on that if we wanna adhere by this policy and, and do a little less and do it smarter.
So, and, yeah, I think that's, uh, well said, and I, and I like to see things put in the positive usually rather than the negative. And so a way to put that in the positive, you know, is that, you know, we will, I'm wordsmithing up here, but have a priority to have council meeting, council meetings end by midnight, um, so that everybody can participate and leave it at that, but put it more in the positive than this negative talk.
I do, I do like the idea of sort of changing the language so that there is sort of a positive, you know, tone to it, that, that the council, um, uh, council's goal or principle is to try and finish meetings by midnight, um, recognizing that, that there are, you know, we wanna make sure that, that, that people, the public can be heard, um, on items and, you know, just put some language around that. Um, and then, you know, maybe we do, we do put a policy in there that's sort of similar to the, the prior policy, but it's, you know, the, uh, if the council decides by 11:30, uh, by acclamation, it will go past midnight, but it has to be by acclamation, and we'll leave it at that. But I would like to move it to 11:30, 'cause we're, we usually, we're, we're in the midst of an item, you know, and it's hard to kinda.
Right.
Block it, and we don't necessarily see, see where we are until 11:30, so I'd like to recommend.
I think that seems appropriate, and I think the reason, you know, I was, that our meetings do go so late is because we only meet twice a month, and that's how we've decided we wanted to do it, so that people can have a break, and also staff isn't turning around preparing reports for the next Thursday after a Tuesday night meeting. And that's why our meetings go late oftentimes, or one of the reasons.
Okay. So with that, uh.
All that is good, thank you.
Okay, great.
It's good feedback, thank you.
All right, wonderful. Any other comments on this item? Okay, uh, great. Um, so now we will move to, uh, information items. We have, uh, item H1, update on the water system master plan, um, and staff is available for questions. I don't know if there's any, if we have any questions, right? Uh, and thank you for the update, do, do appreciate that. I assume we have no city manager report this evening. Um, council member reports would, okay. The, yes, well, I already gave the report on the, on the CAM. Um, I will also mention that, uh, council member, East Palo Alto council member Larry Moody, uh, this evening called me and, and asked that I relay on to you an invitation for the League of Cities event tomorrow night, which is carrying on the legacy of, of Dr. Martin Luther King from City Hall. Um, that is, uh, happening tomorrow night, and, uh, wanted to encourage one of us to attend if, if possible. So I, I at least, uh, thought I would share that with you. Um, with that, if there are no council member reports, any, anything else, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is February 6th.
The next regular council meeting is scheduled for February 6th, yes.
February 6th, all right. Thanks, yes.
Is the Martin Luther King event, it's actually, is it Thursday night?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Thursday night, not tomorrow night.
So it's Thursday night, and it's at the McKenzie Boardroom at the Engineering School at Stanford.
It's a League of Cities event.
It's a League of California Cities event, uh, and it's 6:30 to 9:00, and they're, yeah.
Okay.
Thursday night.
All right, with that, uh, let's see, we will adjourn until our next meeting on February 6th. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.